11th at 7:00 PM for the Scappus Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Monica Allers.
Marty Markey.
Scott Jensen.
Harlow Vernwald.
All right. Next up is approval of minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. And next, we have citizen input. This is for any members of the community that wish to speak on any topic not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody that wants to speak on something not on the agenda tonight? Okay, thank you. Then we are on to new business. Our first item of new business is appointment of a new vice chair. So I will open up for nominations. Well, I can't be the vice chair.
True.
So it's not terribly hard and I'm perfectly happy to have you run a meeting and I'll be sitting right next to whoever wants some on the job training. It's, the staff make it easy.
Are you interested?
Yeah, that's easy enough. Oh, you need to be speaking into the mics a bit better.
Yes, with direction.
Okay. Do you want to volunteer? That might be the easiest way.
I will volunteer.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. We'll have to vote on it, right? So, okay. All right, you two, motion and second.
Motion for Harlow Vernwald to be the vice chair.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, congratulations. All right, I'll see you later.
On the job training.
Yep, okay. Next item up is docket SB 1-24. This is Columbia County Habitat for Humanity, Inc. has requested approval of a preliminary subdivision plat SB 1-24 to subdivide approximately .74 acres of land into 10 lots to support townhouses. This site is located across two existing tax lots. One is addressed as 33741 Southeast Oak Street, Columbia County Assessment Map number 3212 DB 03000. And the other is an unaddressed property off Southeast Myrtle Street, described as Columbia County Assessment Map 3212 DA 02501. The site is southwest of the Southeast Myrtle Street and Southeast Fourth Street intersection. The format is going to, this is a limited land use decision, so there's going to be no verbal testimony during the meeting since there is no required interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. However, written comments have been submitted prior to the deadline and we've added some new ones from the published agenda that we will cover. So I will start with the script that I need to read. "I am calling this public hearing to order to consider an application for site development review. The procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Limited land use decisions do not take verbal public testimony because they do not require interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Any written comments shall be included in the record. Only the staff, the applicant, and the planning commission will have an opportunity to speak. Does any planning commission member wish to declare any ex parte context or conflicts of interest regarding this matter? Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter?" All right. The order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, then the staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. The decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council." All right, take it away.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you all for being here tonight and for reviewing the materials in the packet. Similar to last meeting, we had two public comments that came in after the report was published, which is allowed. We allow comments until the day before the hearing, so we just have to publish it post fact. And you all have, also for the audience, if anyone's interested, it should be, there should be one over there that gentleman has. And so this shows the amended sections of the staff report along with the additional comments that were submitted and then staff's response to each of them. One of the comments did result in an amendment to the conditions of approval, which I'll point out when we get to that. But this has all of the changes since the published packet that you all have, so. With that, I'll begin going over the subject site information and observations of the staff report. I'll list the relevant approval criteria for the proposed development and let you know which pages correspond to the findings of each chapter of the municipal and development codes. And then lastly, I'll let you know staff's recommendation on this application and our recommended conditions of approval. After that, we can briefly pause in case you have any questions for staff before the applicant's presentation. So of your packets, the subject site information begins on page 13. "The subject site consists of two existing tax lots. Tax Lot 3000 is 0.57 acres and currently consists of a gravel driveway and two big leaf maple trees. Tax Lot 2501 is about 0.17 acres and currently consists of three white oak trees. Collectively, the subject site is about 0.74 acres. The site is predominantly surrounded by single-family homes with a multifamily development to the northwest and to the north of the site respectively. The subject site and its surroundings are zoned moderate density residential and are designated as general residential on the comprehensive plan map. Subject site is not located within the 100-year floodplain and there are no wetlands, slope hazards, watercourses, or other hazardous areas in the site. Requested approval: The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary subdivision plat to subdivide 0.74 acres of land into 10 lots to support townhouses. The lots range in size from approximately 2,699 square feet to 3,621 square feet. The subdivision does not propose to create new streets nor would it reconfigure or extend any existing streets. Property has frontage on Southeast Myrtle Street and Southeast Oak Street. Both streets are classified by our transportation system plan as local streets, which require 54 feet of right-of-way width comprised of 32 feet of vehicular travelway and parking, two five-and-a-half-foot planer strips, two five-foot sidewalks, and two six-inch utility areas. Myrtle Street currently has a right-of-way width of 60 feet and a paved width of 34 feet. The applicant is proposing to grind and inlay pave 17 and 1/2 feet of Myrtle Street. From center line south, install five-foot sidewalks on their frontage with curb and gutter and plant street trees between the sidewalk and property line. Oak Street currently has a right-of-way width of 55 feet and a paved width of 22.4 feet. The applicant is proposing to install five-foot sidewalks with curb and gutter, pave between the curb and the existing travelway to provide a full 16-foot wide travel lane and plant street trees between the sidewalk and property line. The applicant is proposing to install a new streetlight on each of the two frontages. Traffic generation: The applicant submitted a transportation impact study letter, which provides the anticipated number of daily trips, including morning and evening peak hour trips of the proposed development. The 10 single-family attached houses are anticipated to generate 26 daily weekday trips, which includes seven morning peak hour trips and nine evening peak hour trips. Due to the low volume of expected daily weekday trips, no new transportation facilities or mitigation measures will be required. Utilities: There is currently an eight-inch concrete sewer main in both Myrtle Street and Oak Street. The applicant proposes to connect four-inch laterals to the mains to serve each new lot. The recommended conditions of approval will require the applicant to video inspect the existing sewer lateral in Myrtle Street and submit it to the city for inspection and approval if it will be used for the development. If the lateral is insufficient, as determined by the Public Works Director, City Engineer, or Building Official, the applicant will be required to replace it prior to the completion of street improvements. The applicant is proposing to install new curb and gutter along their Myrtle Street and Oak Street frontages to be conveyed to separate catch basins. The applicant is also proposing to install soakage trenches on each new lot for onsite stormwater management. Based on the infiltration rates of the site, lots 1, 5, 8, and 10, which are the corner lots of the subdivision, require an 81.5-square-foot soakage trench. And lots 2 through 4, 6, and 7, and 9 will require a 54.5-square-foot soakage trench, which are the interior lots. The proposed stormwater management system is designed to accommodate a 100-year storm event. For water, the applicant is proposing to upsize the existing water main in Southeast Myrtle Street from the western end of the subject site's frontage to Southeast Fourth Street so that the main is eight inches. The city, a while ago, had ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan. And so this project has been known about for a while and in support of it allocated some dollars to these water upgrades. So on the Myrtle Street side, the city has agreed to provide engineered plans and $50,000 of ARPA funds towards the upgrade. And the council's ARPA fund allocation also included $250,000 towards upsizing the existing water main in Southeast Oak Street between Southeast Third and Fourth Streets so that the main is eight inches. This will be completed by the city at a later time. If the applicant is ready to connect before the water main upgrade has been completed by the city, they may connect to the existing two-inch water main. If the upgrades have been completed, the applicant is proposing to utilize the new eight-inch line as shown in their utility plan. The applicant is proposing to connect new one-inch laterals to the water mains to serve each new lot. Landscaping, screening, and street trees. The applicant is proposing to plant nine deciduous street trees along Myrtle Street frontage and four deciduous street trees along the Southeast Oak Street frontage. Street trees will be required to be planted in the right-of-way and to be of a species on the approved street tree list. Public and private agencies: The City of Scappus interim city manager, public works director, interim public safety director, Columbia County Building Official, Scappus Rural Fire Protection District, Columbia River PUD, and Scappus School District Superintendent have been provided an opportunity to review and comment on this proposal and the city engineer's comments are incorporated throughout the report. The Columbia County Building Official provided a referral comment stating that they have reviewed the application and have no objection to its approval as submitted. The Scappus School District Superintendent submitted a similar comment that they have no objection as submitted. And similarly, the Public Works Director stated they have no objection to the application or its approval as submitted. The Columbia River PUD stated that they would request an eight-foot public utility easement along the frontages of both Southeast Oak Street and Southeast Myrtle Street. The PUD also states that if PUD facilities will cross tax lot, then an easement will be required prior to the installation of the services. The PUD clarified that they will not require the applicant to underground the existing overhead utilities and that proposals for streetlights must be submitted and approved by the City of Scappus before being submitted to the PUD. And lastly, the PUD stated that the pole-mounted street lighting will need to be on poles owned by the PUD, noting that as currently proposed, they're proposed to be on existing poles that are owned by Lumen. And the applicable requirements that were requested by the PUD are included in the recommended conditions of approval. The Scappus Rural Fire Protection District provided a comment that listed requirements related to fire hydrants, fire access, addressing, and different code requirements that they would have to follow. And the applicable requirements have been listed in the conditions of approval. "Notice of the application and hearing was mailed to property owners within 200 feet of the subject site on June 27, posted on Pamplin Media's website on June 24, and published in the July 5, 2024 edition of The Spotlight. As of today, there have been two comments made by the public. The first, as you'll see in your additional packet, Sierra Stevens provided a comment on file as Exhibit 12 that she disagrees with the proposal to subdivide the property and construct 10 townhouses. Ms. Stevens asserts that townhouses will change the single-family character of the neighborhood, do not align with the historic and mid-century aesthetic of the other homes, and would likely depreciate her home value. DAP provided a response to Sierra Stevens' comment, clarifying that the subject site is in the R4 zone and that Section 17.50.030 governs permitted and conditional uses in the R4 zone and that townhouses, which are limited to a maximum of four attached, are listed as outright permitted use in the R4 zone. Therefore, staff holds that as long as the applicant meets the criteria above, townhomes can be constructed once the conditions of approval are satisfied and the final subdivision plat has been recorded by the developer." Brian and Angela Hammond also provided a public comment on file as Exhibit 13, listing their requests related to building height, windows, and the location of the proposed mailbox cluster on Myrtle Street, since it fronts their driveway. Specifically with building height, they were requesting that the townhouses be one-story instead of two, that no windows of the townhouses face their property, and that the mailbox cluster on Myrtle Street be shifted to the west so it does not front their property. DAP also provided a response to this public comment, clarifying that approval of the subdivision preliminary plat is based on a review of the proposed lot division and street improvements. It's not at all related to the actual construction and building of the townhouse structures. And so all of those requirements would be at a later time, but they would be subject to our setback standards in the R4 zone and then also building height as it relates to number of stories. So they would have to just follow whatever standards are on the books. Related to the mailbox issue, we had some conversations with the applicant and they agreed to shift the mailbox so that it does not interfere with access to the Hammond's driveway or any other driveway. The recommended condition of approval number 16 has been updated to require this. Moving to findings of fact, staff's findings related to Scappus Municipal Code, Chapter 12.10, Visual Clearance Areas can be found on pages 15 through 17, 17.50 R4 Moderate Density Residential, pages 17 and 18, 17.104 Street Trees, pages 19 through 21, 17.150 Land Division Subdivision, pages 21 through 24, Chapter 17.154 Street and Utility Improvement Standards, pages 24 through 38, and then Chapter 17.164 Procedures for Decision-Making Limited Land Use Decisions, pages 38 and 39. Based on the findings of fact and the materials submitted by the applicant, staff recommends that the planning commission approve subdivision 1-24 subject to the conditions of approval listed on pages 40 through 43 of the packet. For this application, staff is recommending 28 conditions of approval with mostly super standard conditions for our subdivision applications, but a few related to this site and proposal specifically. I will point your attention to the packet I handed out that added condition of approval, or added to condition of approval number 16. So, "Condition of Approval in Full" now states, "The applicant shall install locking cluster mailboxes to serve the development subject to the approval of the Scappus Postmaster and City Engineer. The mailboxes shall comply with Section 17.154.030 Subsection P, Chapter 11 of the Oregon Structural Specialty Code and U.S. Postal Service Recommendations." And then what was added as a result of the public comment is, "The mailboxes shall not be located in such a way that would interfere with access to any driveway, whether part of the development or an existing residence." So at this time, I can take any questions that you'd like to ask staff before moving to the applicant's presentation.
Does anybody have questions for staff at this time? All right, we would like to ask the applicant to come up for their presentation, please. And I'll remind you, speaking to the mic way better than I've been doing tonight. Makes it a lot easier to hear on the record later.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Columbia County Habitat for Humanity, and I'm here with a few of our board members. We have Kanika Peterson, Mary Ann Anderson, and Mike Stone. I wanted to start by telling you a little bit about our organization. Habitat for Humanity is a grassroots nonprofit. In 1999, people from all communities in Columbia County got together and they made an application to Habitat for Humanity International. So we are independently reincorporated. We have a local board who makes decisions about all of our projects. So to date, we have built 31 access ramps, completed 12 critical home repairs, and built 12 homes. We currently are building a home in Vernonia, which we are framing at this point. And we'll be starting a home in St. Helens this summer. The home in St. Helens, the application process is open right now. We have over 20 applicants for that one home. So affordable homeownership is really the focus of Habitat for Humanity and it's not something that people typically think about when they're talking about affordable housing. Affordable homeownership has a very different character. We focus on homeownership because it builds family wealth and it creates stability. Habitat homeowners are rooted in the community. Most would be considered essential workers. They have consistent income, low debt, past criminal background checks. Most volunteer in the community. Current Habitat homeowners volunteer for nonprofit boards, Ju-String Community Players, Columbia County Search and Rescue, Toy and Joy, Columbia County Fair, schools, churches, and of course, the Habitat Restore. Habitat homeowners help build their homes alongside volunteers and they pay an affordable mortgage. Through financial education and sweat equity, Habitat homeowners achieve the strength and the stability and independence they need to build a better life for themselves and their families. Each homeowner buys their home. They pay a mortgage, property taxes, and insurance that are no more than 30% of their gross income. The rest of the sales price is subsidized by a forgivable zero-interest loan, down payment assistance, or IDA match savings. So just to clarify, when we sell a home, the sales documents say that it's sold for the appraised value. And we do this so we do not reduce home values in the area. We use a two-pronged approach to make these homes affordable. We save money on the building and we put together affordable mortgages. And that allows us to offer by far the best homeownership opportunities for low-income families. Many residents of Scappus drive out of the county for better-paying jobs. Those people working in Scappus, bank tellers and retail clerks, struggle to find affordable housing. Providing homeownership opportunities for these folks would add value to the community. Having a stable payment allows families to plan for the future, save for retirement, and focus on meeting more than just basic needs of their families. In Scappus, 10 affordable homes would have a significant impact. So this proposed project grew out of our relationship with Community Action Team. They own this property, which they purchased in 2007, and they wanted to have a self-help homeownership program. However, their program focus shifted and they sold the property to us because they wanted to fulfill the intended purpose. While there are significant hurdles to start construction and the cost to upgrade the water lines, we've worked hard to gather city, state, and federal support. We're excited to get started on our first homes in Scappus. I have Robert from Lower Columbia Engineering is online and would you like to cover some of the details of the project?
Hey, Jennifer. Like you said, my name's Robert. I'm with Lower Columbia Engineering. I think the staff report did a really good job of describing everything that we're looking to do with this. Just like it was stated, we've got two existing lots. We're looking to subdivide into 10 lots total. The idea is that there would be three buildings, so we would have a cluster of four townhomes along Myrtle Street on one property, another cluster of two townhomes on Myrtle Street, and then along Oak Street, there would be the last cluster of four townhomes. All of this is intended to be built to Public Works standards. We would have the frontage improvements addressed with sidewalk, curb and gutter, the street trees, the planners, and applicable stormwater improvements. Aside from that, I think the intended development of the houses themselves is going to be made to meet the requirements of the building. With that, I think that the rest might be answered. Do we have any questions that might be had or in the staff report?
Anybody have any questions? I don't believe we have any questions at this time. Thank you very much. Any staff response?
No staff response.
Okay. So the hearing is closed for the consideration of the matter by the commission. All right, what do you guys think?
Great.
It sounds great.
I was only pointing at the mic. Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good project. You know, I'm glad to hear the property is getting to meet that original intent and that the Columbia County Habitat for Humanity has the ability to move this project forward. I think this is, you know, a great project. I think it is pretty straightforward and, you know, staff responded well with the comments that were made and addressed that as necessary in the staff report. They revised, revisioned the staff report. Anybody else have any comments?
No comment, but I do have a question regarding the building and it doesn't really pertain to whether you're approving it today. I'm just curious. With the properties being attached... Um, with the properties being attached like that, um, how do you handle the ownerships of roofs for each separate building with them being townhomes? I've seen other townhome projects like this in other neighborhoods where they've had roof issues. And so I was just curious as far as maintenance requirements um, for each party, um, that way that doesn't become an issue later on.
Hi, um, my name is Kanika Peterson.
Speak.
Hi, Kanika Peterson, um, board member. Um, regarding to your question, question, this probably has a limited level of homeowner association that we have to have all these homeowners sign. Part of it because it's a townhome, therefore the house has party wall that they have to share and maintaining the party wall and all those stuff. It has been done. So, uh, but beside that, um, each townhome is in its own lot. With everything completely separate.
Okay.
Besides the party wall. So, that's what I mean by limited owner association.
Okay, so there's not going to be issues with like roof maintenance or anything like that in the future?
Everybody, people maintain their own thing. So it's, uh, it's after it's become ten lot. And the, uh, the homeowner would own that lot and the house is on it. Right. The, the one that, the, the part that, uh, it's going to share with their neighbor, pretty much the party wall. So regarding maintenance, in the, you know, in the future, there's a leakage of some things, the roof need to be re-roofed, latching on top of the party wall. It's, that would be, you know, agree, addressed on the homeowner association language.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Yeah, but beside that, I don't think these homeowners are going to share anything.
Uh, I just had that question. I've come across so many properties lately that are similar to this, so I was just wondering if that would be an issue.
I think that's it again. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Sure, I, I make the motion that we approve, uh, docket number SB one dash two four of Columbia County Habitat for Humanities, um, subdivision of these point seven four acres of land into ten lots to support townhouses. Uh, the site's located across two existing tax lots, one at three, three, seven, four, one, southeast Oak Street, and the other, an unaddressed property off of southeast Myrtle Street. Um, the site is southwest of the southeast Myrtle Street and southeast fourth street intersection. And I would move for approval of this, uh, subject to the satisfaction of the conditions of approval. Oh, as a, this, uh, I'm sorry, this docket
Has amended.
Has been amended as of today, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. SB one dash two four is approved. Now, we have a bit more super exciting meeting, but now you don't have to stay.
Yeah, congratulations.
All right, with that, we move on to calendar check. Okay. Well, uh, this Saturday, Scappus Farmers Market, nine to two. It is weird to not have Bill here. Uh, Urban Rural Agency on Monday, the fifteenth at six, followed by City Council at seven. Thursday, the eighteenth, Economic Development Committee at noon, followed by Parks and Rec Committee at six.
The EDC meeting's been canceled.
Thank you. Uh, Saturday, the twentieth, Scappus Farmers Market. Uh, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, No Planning Commission meeting. On Saturday, the twenty-seventh, the Farmers Market continues. Uh, in August, starting Friday, August second, there's Movies in the Park at six P M. And then Saturday, the third, uh, Farmers Market. Monday, the fifth of August, City Council Work Session, six P M, followed by City Council Meeting at seven. Thursday, the eighth, No Planning Commission. Friday, the ninth of August, Movies in the Park, six P M. Saturday, Scappus Farmers Market. August fifteenth, Economic Development Committee at noon and Parks and Rec Committee at six. Friday, the sixteenth, Movies in the Park at six. And Saturday, the seventeenth, Scappus Farmer Market. August nineteenth, City Council Work Session at six, followed by City Council Meeting at seven. Then Thursday, the twenty-second, we have a Planning Commission Meeting. Is that still expected?
Uh, that's TBD. We don't have any active land use applications right now, so it, that's more of a placeholder.
Okay. Uh, Friday, the twenty-third, Movies in the Park at six. Saturday, uh, Scappus Farmers Market. And then Friday, August thirtieth, Movies in the Park at six. And Saturday, the thirty-first, Farmers Market at nine A M. Next up, Commissioner comments. I pretty much already did my, uh, pontificating earlier. Uh, staff comments.
Yeah, keep these quick since we've had a couple meetings recently. Harlow, appreciate you stepping up as vice chair. Looking forward to working with you in that role. We don't currently have any active requests for inquiry meetings. We held a pre-app-
Nothing's changed in the two minutes since you last told us.
Yeah. Um, we held a pre-app conference on, uh, a, for a partition on southwest Sequoia Street today. So they'll get moving with land use pretty quickly. And then on August eighth, we're holding that pre-app meeting with Ness Campbell, the Crane and Rigging Service. There are no scheduled PC meetings in the sense that there's no active applications that are ready to go to Planning Commission. And then for fifty-year plan, still the same as last time we met. We're just looking to narrow down the areas that we're, uh, examining for our U G B expansion. The U G B expansion will be fifty-nine acres because that's the demonstrated need we've shown. And then as far as urban reserves, we're still figuring that out a little more in terms of how much acreage we're going to bring into urban reserves. And that is it for the planning side. Chris?
I'm just a real brief project update. I know, um, we sounded like a broken record on some of these, but they, they take a while to complete. Um, user subdivision up there on Keys Road, it's, it's in construction, so you'll probably see some trucks uh, running up and down the hill, uh, from the E M Watt side to access that site. Now they're just stripping the site and then they'll be, um, moving into active construction of the roads and utilities up there over the next probably month or so. Well, probably two months. Um, Dutch Canyon Phase Four off Callahan Road is also doing the same thing. They're stripping and, and doing some site grading. They hope to be in active construction here probably within the next thirty days. Um, the Reach Up Project, which, uh, is in, uh, Grabhorn Park, uh, it's to do the, the bank layback there, work, um, it's a Scappus Bay watershed project. Um, they'll be hauling off material there. It's just all export and that'll, um, that'll be moving off-site. See, it's, uh, yet to be determined exactly where that material is going to go. We have a pre-con next week though, and, uh, that should kick off here in about a month. And more road, uh, construction projects still, a little bit of work going on out there with, uh, franchise utilities. They've had a little bit of a slowdown just to get, uh, um, some agreements with adjacent property owners to do some of that work. So that's holding things up as well as some of the franchise utility work. And, uh, but they are making progress and they hope to get back to the, the actual road construction part of it uh, in the next, say, sixty days. And then finally, Maple Street, uh, north of the middle school. Um, that's going pretty well. They're going to be pouring curves tomorrow, so that'll be a really busy area, so please avoid that if you can. And, um, that'll be great. That'll, it'll bring sidewalks all the way from the highway then to uh, Third Street on, on the north side anyway, so be a nice, a nice, uh, you know, nice amenity for, for, you know, kids and stuff walking to and from school. Anyway, um, that's about it. Any questions?
No, doesn't look, all right. Welcome aboard. And, uh, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-one. Good job, everybody. You know, I'm, it feels like it's just too shouty for what is essentially almost always a friendly meeting.